Welcome, and thank you for being with us tonight for the candidate forum for the San Leandro City Council. I'm Jo Loss of the League of Women Voters of the Eden area. The League of Women Voters is a trusted membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We do not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. The League participates in advocacy and voter education. The advocacy arm of the League may take positions on issues such as invalid measures, but this forum is presented by the education arm of the League. I'd like to remind everyone that the candidates have all agreed to participate under the ground rules set for this forum. The League is very proud of their history of civil discourse and nonpartisan forums. This is an educational event, not a debate. Before we get started, there are some details to review that will help you interact with this session. The microphones are muted for everyone except for the candidates and the moderator. Candidates will stay on the screen for the entire forum and will mute until it is their turn to speak. We're recording this forum and we'll be posting it on our YouTube channel and our website for the broader community to access. So we have one forum tonight. This is for the position of San Leandro City Council. San Leandro City Council runs in districts, so tonight District 1. We have Ken Pon and Selena Reynas. Candidate David Anderson chose not to participate. For District 3, Victor Aguilar. Mr. Aguilar chose not to participate. And for District 5, we have Sue Bowen and Monique Tate. We're handling questions for the candidates in the following manner. Questions for the forum have been solicited in advance from the community and from our local leagues. We've screened the questions to avoid duplication and anything inappropriate. The order of answering the questions will alternate, and each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. The candidates have drawn lots for the order of speaking. We will begin now with opening statements. We will start with Ms. Tate.
Hi, my name is Monique Tate, and I am a resident of San Leandro for the past 30 years. I've been an advocate for the community for about 20-plus years, and I currently serve on the school board, and I have three children that have graduated through our public school system and received a great education. And I serve on several boards through education, the Alameda County School Boards Association. I'm a California delegate assembly with California School Boards Association, and I also have worked in education for almost 20 years as a preschool teacher and then also at the Alameda County Office of Ed as a program director. And I currently work for the Contra Costa County Probation Department for the Office of Reentry and Justice, serving people that are being released from jail. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bowen, your opening statement, please.
Hi, my name is Sue Bowen, and I'm running for city councils in District 5 because I know that I can make a difference in the community. I grew up as a resettled refugee in the Midwest and saw my parents working really hard, and it really instilled a strong sense of work ethic and caring for others. I actually have a disability and can't use my right hand, and so that really taught me to be resilient and to be resourceful and to be incredibly empathetic of others. And I really am committed to San Leandro. I have three young children. I work here. I started a nonprofit here because I saw gaps in the community, and that's what I've always done. If there's an opportunity for me to take action and uplift the community, I will. I think that we owe it to our shared humanity to do good for those that came before us and that come after us. And so I'm running for San Leandro just to make a difference, take my experience, my education, and my expertise, and my passion for this community and to do good.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Ms. Reyes. Your opening statement, please.
Hi, my name is Selena Reynas, and I'm running for District 1. My story in San Leandro began with my grandparents who immigrated with 4th grade educations to work factory jobs here in San Leandro. I grew up in the East Bay, and after graduating college, I followed in my father's footsteps. I became a teacher at Bishop O'Dowd High School. And I began my involvement in the community for the same reason I became a teacher, which was to help other people. While I was still a resident, I helped lead the coalition that passed San Leandro's historic community police oversight ordinance. I served on the budget task force, and I began getting involved politically in our local democratic orgs. I'm running for San Leandro because I believe that I can make a difference for the next generation of San Leandro residents. I would like to tackle affordable housing and protection for tenants, environmental issues, as well as public safety issues, especially creating a mental health crisis response here in San Leandro. I'm running to uplift all residents, and I'm excited to be speaking with you today.
Thank you. Mr. Pon, your opening statement, please.
Hi, my name is Ken Pon. I am running for District 1, City Council here in San Leandro. I've lived in San Leandro for 41 years, and I've been a community volunteer for 36 of those 41 years. I had CPA practice here in downtown San Leandro for 35 years. During this 36 years, I've served on over 25 different San Leandro commissions, committees, task force associations, clubs, foundations, boards, and teams, beginning with our youth soccer league when our son was very young, moving on to PTAs and dads' clubs here in our local schools. Been on our homeowners association board for 26 years, a member of the Rotary Club here, a member of the Downtown Association. And a part of my service included eight years on the San Leandro School Board, and I am in my eighth year as a planning commissioner. I want to make San Leandro a place where our children would and could want to live.
Thank you. So we'll start with our questions, and that goes to Ms. Bowen first. What do you see as the role of a city council member? And what skills and qualifications will you bring to the council?
I think the role of a city council member is really to be a conduit for the community. I think it's to be able to listen and learn and be an advocate for the community and be that bridge to the city as a council that oversees the city manager and works to help the city manager then run the city staff. It's incredibly important to be able to bridge those gaps, understanding where the needs are, where the community is, what the community is advocating for, to take in as much information as you can, to connect the dots, and to really ensure that the city's priorities are in line with the community's priorities. I think that a city council member functions not as an "I" but as a "we", so incredibly important to be able to convene, to be able to work together, to be able to find commonalities and understand where breaks in communications or differences may be so that we can work through it. I am incredibly good at doing those things, and I'm excited to be able to bring that to the council.
Thank you. Ms. Reynas.
Thank you so much. I really couldn't have said it better than Ms. Bowen, but I will try to add on to that a little bit. I do see council as a bridge-building position. You need to have connections within the community, be a listener, someone who's willing to engage with people across a wide spectrum of political ideologies and interests. As when I was leading the coalition to pass community police oversight, that's something that I did, was really work to bridge the interests of activists and organizations and residents and city council members to get something done. And to that end, I also believe that council members should be action-oriented and pragmatic and collaborative, and to really put progress before any type of infighting, to be problem solvers and to look for solutions where they can, and to be advocating not just for the community but with the community.
Thank you. Mr. Pon.
Well, I feel that the role of the city council is to bring our experiences and our relationships with people to the council meetings as part of the total discussion as to where we should go, what our priorities are, and what we need to be looking forward. My being here for 36 years, 41 years, excuse me, I found that I've met people all over town, you know, from the south, north, east, west portions of town. I've met people through the Little League. I think I've met more people through the Little League than any other association I've had. But I bring their values, I bring their opinions from all over town to our city council so we can have, make decisions that really work for everybody or as many people as possible. I think I have more experience than the others, and I think I have brought more to the council than anyone else could because of my 41 years here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Tate.
So I believe that being a city council member is being a liaison between the community and the city, being a leader that will seek out community input, stakeholder input, and to advocate for the community. So the city is a business, and oftentimes the community, they're not aware of the services or they're not able to navigate services. And I think as a city council member, it's incumbent upon us to serve the community and seek out the needs of the community. And so I've been a servant leader my entire life, even before I had a career. It was instilled upon me in my childhood. My mother, she played a role in serving the community, and she exemplified that with my siblings and I, and I think that I will bring that to the table.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Ms. Reynas. What are the top two challenges facing the city of San Leandro today and in the future?
I think the first big challenge is serving our unhoused population and making sure that we are preventing people from becoming homeless in the future. In the last five years, homelessness has quadrupled in San Leandro, and we need programs like a homeless navigation center to stop the bleeding, and we also need tenant protections as well as more housing at all different income levels to prevent homelessness from occurring in the future. And I think that the city has a role to play in that very important issue. And the second issue that I believe is very important in San Leandro is public safety and particularly developing a non-police response to mental health crisis and to other serious mental, to mental health issues. I believe that we can get that done and that we owe it to our residents to ensure that there is safety for them. In addition, preparing for natural disasters, which is a very important public safety issue here.
Thank you. Mr. Pon.
I believe our number-one issue here is public safety, and our number-two issue here are finances. For public safety, during my canvassing of the communities, knocking on doors, talking to people, I asked everybody, "What is your number-one concern here?", and quite honestly, about 95% of the responses have been public safety. People are worried about cars being broken into, versts being stolen, people walking through communities that normally don't come through those communities. And they're very concerned about, you know, being attacked and being accosted all over town. So our public safety needs to be at full capacity. We need to have people patrolling our streets. We need to have our bicycle patrols back again. I'd love to see beat officers. I think that would be a big thing. We're budgeted that the eight out of 10 years, we will have budget deficits. We need to reprioritize what we're doing so that we can be.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Tate, Mrs. Tate.
So I think the first thing I will talk about is public trust, which includes safety. Many people are afraid in San Leandro, they don't trust people. So we've had several attacks, and rightfully so. I can understand the distrust and wanting to be safe. And so I think we need to really work on our public safety with our community and with law enforcement. And then the second thing I will talk about also is mental health awareness. I know that we've seen an increase of people that really need services. And so I think it's really important to advocate for these services. I have a background in mental health. I have family members that have been in John George psychiatric unit, and I've had to navigate the system. But even just walking in our community, I've been approached by people, and I've been very hesitant, but I've also tried to be calm and seek out help for them.
Thank you. And Ms. Bowen.
Yes, echoing the same issues that the other candidates have spoken to. The thing that I also hear often is around public safety, and that's everything to do from crime to harassment and especially against, you know, marginalized populations. As a member of the Asian-American Pacific Islander community in a city that is 37% Asian-American and has seen a significant rise in anti-Asian hate as well, that's something that I often hear about and also has experienced personally. Another issue that I think that we need to address that the city is starting to really do, I think, a fantastic job of acknowledging, is around environment, and you know, we have a robust climate action plan, but you know, that is a floor, not a ceiling, and it's going to require the city council to ensure that we are implementing strategies to be able to implement the recommendations so that we all can breathe clean air and drink clean water and be able to live for generations in this community.
Thank you. Okay, several of you mentioned this, but we have a particular question about homelessness. And it is, goes to you first, Mr. Pon. What would you do to advocate with regional leaders to bring in the infrastructure support and funding that the city needs to help the homeless?
On San Leandro, there are really two things we're trying to do. One is to find housing for the homeless folks, and the other is to provide some services for, you know, homeless folks. As far as the housing, it's not part of what San Leandro does to build houses. So we need to really talk with our county and state and federal level funding sources to find those places within the region. It's not necessarily San Leandro. It's just, you know, housing within the Bay Area is really the area we need to look at for housing. San Leandro doesn't have a lot of spaces to build housing of this nature. I think we tried to do, take over the Nemisville Motel. That didn't work out quite yet. But something like that would be the fund. We need to fund it for that from the county. The navigation center, we're trying to do, yes, we can try, we can put together something to provide the services so that those who are homeless will find a way to stay out of that situation.
Thank you. Next, Mrs. Tate.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. What would you do to advocate with regional leaders to bring in the infrastructure support and funding that the city needs to help the homeless?
So what I'd like to do is partner with businesses. We have a lot of vacant properties here, buildings that could be utilized and turned into housing for the homeless. And then I think that we would seek out grants through the federal government. And then I know I heard a city council member talk about, because we were denied the grant for the navigation center if the public was willing to fundraise. And so I think that we really have to look at every possible option because we have about 400 people in San Leandro that are unhoused. And so I think that we have to bring people together, think takes, and then try to figure out a solution because I know that we could do it, but we just have to put our heads together and be strategic about it. So I think working with businesses, working with grants, the government, and also with the community to provide resources to meet the need.
Thank you. Ms. Bowen.
Can you repeat the question for me?
Sure. What will you do to advocate with regional leaders to bring in the infrastructure support and funding that the city needs to help the homeless?
Yeah, I think that's incredibly important to convene stakeholders together. I think that when you think about addressing the challenges that the homeless population experiences, we have to understand that it is a multifaceted, complex issue that requires us to address all of the prongs of the challenge. I think there are actual examples in communities where people have been able, cities have been able to address it, and that has to do with having wraparound services and really working together with partners, both at the local level as well as the county, regional, state level. I think that, you know, we have to take a housing-first approach, and then from there, we have to consider access to jobs, access to healthcare, access to substance addiction services, access to mental health services. All of these things require working together with social service agencies and other partners in the community.
Thank you. Ms. Reynas.
Well, I mentioned a little bit in a previous answer, the need for preventative measures in addition to wraparound services and addressing this urgent need, but also having rental protections and building more housing. But in terms of collaborating with our regional county and state partners, I think we need to be proactive. It's really important to elect council members who are making this their top priority and who are going to speak about it in all of the rooms they're in with all of the people that they encounter and to really organize around it. I agree with what Ms. Bowen said about partnering with the community as well as what Ms. Tate said about the need for pursuing grants at all levels, especially in San Leandro. We do not have a dedicated grant writer for issues like this. So hiring a dedicated grant writer would be a very smart move going forward. I think I can end that there.
Thank you. You are all doing a wonderful job of watching the clock. We appreciate it. So the next question is a bit of a follow-up question. It will go to Ms. Tate first. Do you support the creation of more affordable housing stock in San Leandro? If so, how would you incentivize such building?
I do support the stock of more affordable housing in San Leandro, but I think that we should have a balance of different types of needs for housing, which would be for affordable housing and other housings for people in different categories. But how would I incentivize it? Like I said, I would work with the government through grant writing to find out what types of grants are available for affordable housing, and then programs to bring awareness and education to the community so that they can qualify. We could partner with, we could partner with different housing providers that provide first-time home buyers. And I know we currently work with, I think it's Eden Area Housing, but we definitely could seek out more opportunities for people to be able to purchase homes and affordable homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Bowen, you're next.
Can you repeat the question for me one more time?
Sure. Let's see, I have many pieces of paper here. Do you support the creation of more affordable housing stock in San Leandro? If so, how would you incentivize such building?
Yes, I do support more affordable housing. I support more housing in general. We are obviously in need of more housing. How I would help incentivize that is, I think, working with the city to help developers be able to go through the process of getting development permitted and being able to build in the city in a streamlined way. I know that right now, there are actually, I think, I had asked city staff, and I think it was like 2,000 units that had actually been approved to be built, but it just hasn't been, the development hasn't started for a myriad of reasons. I think the fact that the pandemic happened obviously slowed things down, but I think that, you know, the easier we can make it for people to build housing and to be able to rent houses, the sooner it will take place. And I think that that's a role that the city can play.
Thank you. Ms. Reynas.
I think there's a lot of ways that we can incentivize more affordable housing in San Leandro. First, we could raise the inclusionary housing ordinance from 15% to 20%. I would also support upzoning, ending exclusionary zoning throughout San Leandro, but upzoning particularly around transit centers. Our recent housing element does a little bit of that. I think that we could even explore the idea of going further because our housing element really is a floor and not a ceiling. I would remove other restrictions that would make construction more cost-effective. As Ms. Bowen was saying, we're doing a great job of approving projects, but we're not breaking ground because there are a lot of, there are a lot of costs associated to doing that. And so incentivizing that would encourage more of these projects that have already been permitted to actually break ground and get built. And finally, I would support streamlining our permitting process. And of course, I would be working with the appropriate departments to help make that happen.
Thank you. Mr. Pon.
So yes, I do support the idea of building more affordable housing, but not just affordable housing, but housing for all income levels. San Leandro is trying to build housing near transit centers so that people who, you know, who live here will not need to have a car to get around to make it easier to commute, you know, to wherever we want to go. But one of the things I noticed that might be a really good incentive that we should look at is getting rid of the minimum parking requirements. That would provide more space for housing as opposed, for housing people as opposed for housing vehicles. About half or 40% of the space we allocate for developments tend to be for vehicles. And if we could find a way to minimize that, get rid of that minimum parking requirements, I think we can build more places for people to live in as opposed for cars to sit in. So that would be my approach.
Thank you. All right, our next question, Ms. Bowen, you will go first. What are your priorities to be a good steward of the city's finances ensuring a position of long-term fiscal responsibility?
You know, I think that we are, right now, the finance department is short-staffed. And so I think helping ensure that that department gets staffed so that they can do the work of ensuring that the city's finances are in order and supporting that department. I think that looking at the budget in terms of not what we need just now, but what do we need in five years and 10 years and down the line so that we can be fiscally responsible? I think that it is really about being creative and understanding that it is a fight that we can't come, being fiscally conservative, and we can't just spend because we want to be able to spend. I think that it's really going to be working in partnership with the council and with city staff to understand what our priorities are and really staying to the line of what we need to be spending money on and with her.
Thank you. Ms. Reynas.
I agree that we, with Ms. Bowen, that we need a fully-staffed finance department. We also need to work to fully fund our unfunded pension liabilities. I worked on the budget task force recently in 2020 and got a look at our budget. And I think that we also need to be exploring new avenues of revenue so that we can invest in projects that benefit the community, like our homeless navigation center, like a mental health crisis response program. So we need to be looking at all avenues of funding, and that includes hiring a grant writer to bring in more funds for special projects. I also would be interested in exploring a participatory budget process. I think some of the best ideas come straight from the community, and supporting a participatory budget process would help generate those ideas, and I think would also get the community very much engaged and invested in what our city is doing with our finances.
Thank you. Mr. Pon.
So I'm a retired CPA. I'm accustomed to looking at financial statements. I worked for the state of California as an auditor. I used to go and audit county government to see how they're spending money. I used to go to public utility companies to see with their financials, how they're doing. So I do have the background in reviewing budgets and seeing how money is being spent and whether we are on target or not on target. On the school board, I have a lot of experience looking at government financials. They're very different from your for-profit type things. And one of the things I noticed when the school district got into its financial situation, you know, difficulties, I asked a question, "Why are we, what happened? What's went on? Why is this happening here?" And really what I found out was they were short-staffed. There was a point in time when people were calling for, "We don't want any more administration. We need to put money in the classrooms", that sort of thing. Turns out, we took money away from something that we really needed as well, which is the admin, so we need to have people working there.
Thank you. Mrs. Tate.
Can you please repeat the question?
Sure. Sure. What are your priorities to be a good steward of the city's finances, ensuring a position of long term fiscal responsibility?
So what I would do is be a part of the process that they're currently doing. I know that they have a finance committee and I serve on the finance committee for the school district. So really being a part of the process, understanding what they're currently doing and then questioning and providing input for things that need to be done. So I I know that as a city council person, we can't go come in and just direct the staff, but we can be a part of the process. So what I would do is some of the other things, the other people in the panel have said, we definitely need to bring in stakeholder involvement. I know that the unions, when I've interviewed with unions, they want the union members to be a part of the process. So I think it should be a transparent process where other people could bring ideas in to bring ideas and resolve the issues.
Thank you. Several of you mentioned this in an earlier answer, so this is an opportunity for you to have one minute. And the question will go to Ms. Reynas first. What is your commitment to support? I'm sorry, let's start over again. What is your commitment to promote and support the police department to help ensure a reduction of violent crime in San Leandro?
I would start by saying that the work that I've done in the last two years leading the coalition to pass community police oversight was motivated by creating a better, more accountable and transparent police department. And something that I got out of that was connecting with our chief and learning a little bit more from our city council members and other stakeholders about the police department. I think one thing is that nobody in this city wants to dial 911 and not have a response when there is an emergency. But we need to be looking at our police department also and seeing if it is right sized. If if we are at the right size for our city, and I think the staff department, the staffing study that council has ordered will do that. And to see if we can develop auxiliary programs like a mental health crisis response that can take certain tasks that police officers do not want to be doing in the community so that police officers that we currently have can focus on violent crime.
Thank you. Mr. Pan.
So I am absolutely committed to staffing our police, our public safety folks, so police and fire, mostly police because we don't really staff fire. As as far as we, to the capacity that we need here in San Leandro. Yes, we have a staffing study going on right now. Our police chief announced that. But I think that staffing study will be just kind of the the basic numbers. I think one of the things we used to have in San Leandro that I would like to see come back are police officers on foot, on bicycles, walking through the community, talk to people. But we had that here in San Leandro for many years. It's gone away in the past, what, five or 10 years? I think that created a much safer climate here in San Leandro, seeing our police officers in person as opposed to in vehicles. So I am the only candidate that's been endorsed by not only our police officers association, but our firefighting association. So my commitment to them is solid. They understand what I want to do and they are strictly behind me.
Thank you. Mrs. Tate.
So I believe in community policing. I believe that each of us in our community, we need to have our eyes and ears open and observing what's going on in our community. And I think that it's easy to say we want to fully staff the police, but this is the national crisis where we just, every, every profession is seeking employees. So it's hard to fund, it's hard to fill the staff, fully staff at this time, but that we continue, we should continue to seek it out. But I think that we as a community should work together to ensure that we are looking out for our neighbors. I've called the police department myself a number of times and they responded promptly. And they thanked me for calling and observing things. So I think we need to have, every community should have a neighborhood watch. And I think that we need to promote that.
Thank you. Ms. Bowen.
Yes, can you repeat the question for me?
Sure. What is your commitment to promote and support the police department to help ensure a reduction of violent crime in San Leandro?
Yeah, I commit, as all of the council members have, to supporting the police and helping bolster staffing so that we have the the manpower to tackle issues in the community. I think that we can also support the police by helping bring in mental health specialists, clinicians, other community members, other experts in the community to do work that the police are tasked with doing now, that could maybe more effectively go into somebody else's workload. I love the idea of bringing back police officers on foot, on on bicycles. I was here when when we had some of those. And and you know, I think it does speak to having, building trust in the community and being able to work together. When, when there is a surge in in public safety issues, bringing the police out and the community together is incredibly impactful.
Yeah. Okay, the next question will go to Ms. Bowen first. What would you do to unify the entire community, not just an individual interest group in the wake of the Stephen Taylor shooting?
What would I do to bring the community together? I think that especially if there are events that are traumatic or that deeply impact the community, there needs to be a time for listening and healing and learning. I think that I am very much a solutions oriented person. And I, but I also think that there is a process for it. And I think we have to understand always when things happen, what are the root causes? And what are the things that we can tackle? We can't solve big issues all at once, but we can absolutely identify the challenges that led to especially the killing of Stephen Taylor. You know, we know that situations are not simple and we have to address all of the different components of that, whether it's mental health or police training.
Thank you. Ms. Reynas.
Before my time starts, I feel compelled to correct an inaccuracy. I was also endorsed by firefighters local 55. And I think it's very important not to mislead the public about endorsements. It was a dual.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Point offered.
Thank you.
Question is, what will you do to unify the entire community, not just an individual interest group in the wake of the Stephen Taylor shooting?
Well, first I would like to say that I have been a member of the group Justice for Stephen Taylor for the last two years. I've worked closely with his grandmother for the last two years and still attend monthly meetings. And one thing that this group has done is create a community event every year on the anniversary of his death to bring the community together, especially families that have been impacted by police violence. It's educational, it's so healing, and it is a unifying event that has been very special for all members of the community. They have done this with the help of other orgs throughout the community, including the Social Justice Academy at San Leandro High School. I think communities like that are, community events like that are very important when we're dealing with a tragic event to have that space to heal. And something that's also important is the park that's being erected in his name, which is supported by Justice for Stephen Taylor as well, and which will have be put up and designed in the marina. Again, spaces for healing are unifying. And I think that that has been a great contribution to the community.
Thank you. Mr. Pan.
So repeat the question, please.
Sure. What will you do to unify an entire community, not just an individual interest group in the wake of the Stephen Taylor shooting?
So I think the whole community was appalled with the shooting of Stephen Taylor. I don't think there was anybody who was on what I would call the wrong side of that whole situation. I think everybody would like to see accountability of the police officers who don't follow their own procedures. And that's what we're doing right now. I believe the police officer who was involved with the shooting of Stephen, Stephen Taylor is now being sued, you know, is coming to justice for that. So I I don't think there's, there's anything we really need to do. I think everybody is already on the same side. I I think acknowledging that mistake was made and holding the police officer accountable is the best way to let people know that that sort of thing is not something we tolerate here in San Leandro.
Thank you. Mrs. Tate.
So I think what we should do is come together as a community and talk about things, have listening sessions, town hall sessions, and bring different groups together to talk about it because this situation affected everyone differently. So I believe that there was a lot of distrust in the police when you saw the video. And so therefore, it was very traumatic to watch the video also. But also think that as we discuss it with the police professionals and the community, and we come together and learn from one another. So I think that's how we build trust amongst each other is by learning different perspectives, learning what we saw, learning the police officers, how, what they're trained to do, and then even what they're trained to do, and then they don't follow the training. So I really think coming together as a community, having forums to talk about it and heal through it.
Thank you. Okay, we're being very cautious, conscious of the time. To everybody, take a deep breath. We have one more question and then we'll be able to move into your two minute closing statement. So this is the last question. And it goes to Ms. Reynas first. Please explain your understanding of what a charter city is and the role of the city council under this type of system.
Yes, so not only are we a charter city, but we have a weak, weak mayor system. The role of city council is to give, in my opinion, clear direction to staff. After collaborating with the community, after collaborating with each other, our job is to give clear direction to staff about what we would like to see done and to collaborate with staff along the way as ordinances are created, as contracts are approved, to make sure that it it meets the expectations of the community. And that is something that every council member could get behind.
All right, thank you. Mr. Pan.
So my understanding of a charter city is it's able to create its own rules and not necessarily have follow general rules, whatever that actually means. We decide how we want to do our own elections. We decide what kind of system of governance we want, whether it's a a strong mayor or a city manager system. We decide how our elected positions are decided. And so we have much more flexibility in deciding how we want to govern ourselves. And as far as city council's role in in a charter city, yeah, it is to bring in the opinions and bring in the voices of the community together so that we can come to consensus as to where we want to go and how we want to be a good city to all of our citizens.
Thank you. Mrs. Tate.
So my understanding of a charter city is that we do form our own, if you will, bylaws for our city, the charter for our city. And it's not governed by what the law or the government would dictate, it would be dictated by the city itself, the charters and what is agreed upon. And as a city council member, we work together with six other people, which includes the mayor. And then we, we have to, you know, the majority of both. So we work together, hopefully in consensus. But the majority would overrule the the outcome. So I know that in San Leandro, it's my understanding that sometimes it's divided. But I think that people could come together to learn and understand what the needs are for the community so that we can bring the services to the forefront.
Thank you. And Ms. Bowen.
I feel like I get to benefit from everybody else's lesson on on a charter city, but it is my understanding that San Leandro is able to develop its own ordinances and choose for itself how it wants to govern and direct the city manager and the city staff to be able to carry out our the, the ordinance that we pass. So for example, we can choose, you know, what that we want to be a sanctuary city, and that is really derived from what the community wants and listening to our priorities. And so whether or not at, at other levels of government, there are rules being implemented. We can choose to stay in our city. We will or will not prioritize or enact those, those laws here. I think as city council members, we really have an opportunity to prioritize what is important and to be able to listen to the community, advocate and and say that in San Leandro, we will or will not be X, Y, or Z, and really listen to the voice of the community.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move to our two minute closing statements. As I stated before, we'll do that in the opposite order of the opening statement. So that will be Mr. Pan, Mrs. Tate, Ms. Bowen, and Ms. Reynas. Mr. Pan, your closing statement.
Thank you very much. I give a little background about myself, kind of my motivation and that sort of thing. I am the son of immigrants. My parents immigrated from China to the US. My father served in the US Army during World War II, who he received the Congressional Gold Medal in recognition of his service. He worked as a waiter. My mother worked as a seamstress. I have five sisters, two brothers, and from all of that, I learned that we need to work together to get anything in our family. We value hard work and and we definitely appreciated and learned how to work together. I was the first in my family to graduate from Ford University. Went to UC Berkeley where I received a bachelor of science degree from the School of Business Administration. Forty one years ago, we moved, Mel and I and our son Christopher moved into our home here in San Leandro, committed to raising our family here in this great town. I ran my CPA business in downtown San Leandro. My wife taught, you know, public schools. I got involved in our community, serving in a number of leadership roles from a task force for the school districts, so financials to cities, financials, the general plan. Over the past thirty six years, I've served as president clerk of the San Leandro School Board, chair of the San Leandro Planning Commission, president treasurer of the San Leandro Downtown Association, Bay of Vista Improvement Association, which is my Homer Association, and the Rotary Club of San Leandro. You know, kind of guided by our small town, because I really like San Leandro, because it is a small town. I know the importance of public safety, maintaining the roads, making our community more sustainable, walkable, and bike friendly, and having enough housing for all. I've been endorsed by mayor, vice mayor, city council member, firefighters, and police department.
Thank you. So you were all very gracious. I got the order wrong. I'm sorry. Mr. Pan was first. Next will be Ms. Reynas. Ms. Reynas.
Sure, thank you. Gosh, I wasn't quite ready, but I'll launch into it. I'm running for this seat because I want to make a difference in the community. My, I mentioned earlier that my family's been here for three generations, ever since my grandparents immigrated to create a better future here, to work in the factories here, to 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 become citizens here. But I'm also deeply invested in this community as someone who is going to be here and raising a family here. I want to create a city that is vibrant and sustainable and safe and fair for the next generation of residents. I'm going to be here for the next forty years, forty plus years, however long I get on this planet. And I want, I want to make a difference for the community. I ask you, when evaluating candidates, look towards our experience, look towards our platform. Also look towards the the endorsements that we have and the support that we have from the community because of our track record of working for the community. I'm the only candidate endorsed by the Alameda County Democratic Party, SCIU, United Healthcare Workers West, the Alameda County Labor Council, and the Building and Construction Trades, representing dozens of unions in the region, Equality California. I also, in addition to my opponent, have an endorsement from the firefighters, and I have a hundred percent rating from Planned Parenthood. and I have a hundred percent rating from Planned Parenthood. But I also want to note that in a year where we are losing all of our female council members, I am the only female candidate running in this race. I think it's very important that we have representation on city council. And I'm excited to be running for the seat and that's part of what motivates me to stay in the race as well. With that, I think I will sign off.
Thank you. And next will be Ms. Bowen. Ms. Bowen, your closing statement, please.
Thank you. While this is my first run for public office, it is not my first time serving the public. I studied political science and economics with the desire to really serve my community in, in terms of affecting policy and creating positive change. I, um, oh, I just lost my train of thought. I apologize. You know, I am deeply invested in the community. I moved here seven years ago and immediately tried as much as I could to be in community. I started a nonprofit to really mobilize people to, to do good, to affect social and environmental justice work and have mobilized thousands of people to tackle everything from gun violence to environmental issues, to women's equality, the wage gap, literally giving, working with partners, sixty-plus nonprofit organizations, nonprofit agencies, social service agencies, county agencies, hospitals, to give out over $750,000 worth of supplies to women in need. We've really done a, a, a job of making sure that we're really addressing causes. I've served on numerous boards and, and really excited to be able to just serve as a conduit for the community. I've been endorsed by all of the women that are now trimming out the mayor, the incumbent, Claudia Lopez, as well as Deborah Cox. I've been endorsed by someone, Maria Banta, Nationals, LME twenty-four president, the Labor Council, AC Dems, the Fire Department, Local Fifty-Five, the Sierra Club, Building Trades, the San Leandro Democratic Club, and many others. And I am just really excited to be able to serve.
Thank you. Mrs. Tate, your closing statement?
So I am grateful to have this opportunity to share that, like I stated before, I've been in San Leandro for a long time now, thirty years. And I grew up in East Oakland to a single parent. There were a lot of challenges. We had, my mother raised four children by herself and she instilled values and community service in us. And so I remember when San Leandro was not as welcoming or diverse as it is now. And so I had the trust to move to San Leandro and raise my three children here. And they've received an excellent education. And I did not want my kids to go to San Leandro schools because of the past history that I knew about. But my daughter is a cancer survivor. And so when it was time to put her into school, that was the best decision I made. And that's how I really started building community with women, children, and families in general, really advocating for services. And then I was able to be appointed to the school board for the last almost eight years. And I've served as president, vice president, and I'm the clerk for the second time. I completed masters in governance through the school, California School Boards Association because I want to learn and understand the best job I can do. And if elected to city council, I'll do the same. I am a lifelong learner. I went back to school at forty, received my AA, my BA, and my master's degree while working full-time for the Alameda County Office of Education. And I'm a hard worker. I advocate for people and I, while I'm learning myself. And so if elected, um, excuse me, I have the trust of my local union twenty, the Alameda Labor Council, the San Leandro Chamber of Commerce, the Teamsters Union, Local Fifty-Three, and CSCA. Thank you.
Thank you. That two minutes goes very quickly, doesn't it?
It does.
So in conclusion, we know that some of the folks haven't had their particular question addressed. The screeners combined similar questions of general interest to the audience in the limited time we had. And there were a number of questions that came in very late this afternoon after the screeners had already worked. We hope that you will contact the candidates directly for additional information. Your local league also participates in Voters Edge, which is an online collection of candidates' information. We encourage you to view the candidates' resumes, platforms, and positions there, votersedge.org. If you've moved or changed your name or wish to change your party affiliation since you last registered, you need to re-register. Online voter registration is available at the Secretary of State website, sos.ca.gov. It's secure and easy. The deadline to register to vote online is October 24th. Voters may also register to vote on Election Day and vote provisionally. Ballots started to go out on October 10th. You can vote in person, by mail, or place your ballot in an official Alameda County ballot drop box. Whatever you choose, please remember to cast your ballot on or before Election Day, November 8th, 2022. Thank you to the candidates for participating this evening. Thank you, the attendees, for taking time to become an educated voter. We also had many volunteers participating and want to thank them for their help. We welcome any of you to join the League of Women Voters in empowering voters and defending democracy. Please vote on November 8th. Thank you.